Well, at six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order if Phil can lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. My most kind and gracious heavenly Father God, thank you, Lord, for this another day. Thank you for all the blessings of life, God. I pray, Lord, that you would intercede tonight with us in this meeting, Lord, and that you would bless us and help us to make the best decisions we can on behalf of the city and everything we do, Lord, let us do it to honor you. Please bless our citizens, our employees, and our elected officials as we strive to make Cumming the best place that we can to live, Lord. Now go with us, lead God and direct us. These many favors and blessings, I ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mary, want to join us with pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is to consider the agenda for adoption. There is one change on, under new business administration number four, the word bond should be replaced with the word note. There were no other changes to have a motion to adopt.
Sure. Second.
Please vote. Carriage five, oh. Item five, considering for adoption, the meeting minutes. Item A, the regular meeting, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Please vote. Carriage five, oh. Item B, the executive session meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Please vote. Carriage five, oh. Next, we have a proclamation. Recognizing National Sarcoidosis Awareness Month. Whereas sarcoidosis is an inflammatory disease that can affect almost any organ of the body and causes the immune system, which normally protects the body from infection and disease, to overreact resulting in damage to the body's own tissue. And whereas the classic feature of sarcoidosis is the formation of microscopic clumps of inflammatory cells that group together, and if too many form in an organ, they can interfere with the organ function. Whereas causes of sarcoidosis are currently unknown, and the disease can affect people of any age, race, or gender, but is more common among adults between the ages of twenty and forty. And whereas sarcoidosis is a multi-system disorder, meaning that symptoms typically depend on which organ the disease affects, and in most cases affects the lungs. And whereas the month of April marks the occasion of National Sarcoidosis Month with observances focused on generating public awareness and understanding, compassion for those suffering from this disease, and support for medical research. Whereas recognizing Sarcoidosis Month in Cumming and Forsyth County will provide local residents with the opportunity to increase their understanding of this potentially fatal disease. Now therefore, I Troy Brumlow, Mayor of the City of Cumming, to hereby set my hand this fifth day of April, two thousand twenty-two, to declare two thousand, April, two thousand twenty-two, a sarcoidosis awareness month in the City of Cumming. Do we have somebody to get it? It's good to see you again. Doing well?
Yes, sir.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you again. Next, under old business, item A, update on alcohol ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are, we have the alcohol ordinance that we talked about, I think it was at last meeting. It's in your packets. And I guess I'm here to kind of just answer any questions we might have in light of having a little more time to think about it.
Have any questions or discussion?
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
This says that fifty percent of the gross annual of the sales of a cigar shop need not be food. So you can sell drinks, and it doesn't matter how many, but you don't have to sell food, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that normal? People tell me cigar shops sometimes have that.
Councilman, yes, ma'am. I don't know if normal, because that's a broad term, right? But there are several other jurisdictions who do very similar things. We looked into it a little bit after the last meeting. And we looked at the City of Cartersville, who has a similar threshold, which is only requiring fifty-one percent of its revenue from cigars required to keep their alcohol license. The town of Cedar Town, or the City of Cedar Town is the same way, fifty-one percent.
What about Forsyth County?
They require sixty percent of the revenue from cigars.
They require what?
Sixty percent.
These cigars?
Yes, ma'am.
They don't require any food either, is what I'm saying. Forsyth County cigar shops don't have to have any food.
Not, not from what we can tell in their ordinances, no, ma'am.
Then I have a question when you get on here to the ordinances that are set up for the city center. We discussed at one time that you could buy more than one beer or whatever it is that you're drinking, and you could carry it around or you could possess it while you watched a show or while, you know, a show at the auditorium.
Sure.
Or while you play golf. Where is that in this company?
So this, there are a couple places where we have that.
Well, everything I've read says you can only have one drink. And then I'm wondering why can you get all these multiple drinks and carry them around? I know, I know you got to buy them there.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, where do you buy them and?
What it's, what the, what the ordinance does, it makes it such that a person can purchase a drink and walk around with it.
Right.
In certain areas, certain designated areas. There'll be areas that are off limits, parking decks, things like that, but that's something for another day. Here, though, what they're, what you're asking about specifically is covered in... It is in section two, subsection B. And it's going to be at the end of paragraph one there.
Read that to me, please.
It shall be permissible, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll start the sentence over. The foregoing or any other restrictions in this ordinance notwithstanding, it shall be permissible for a single individual to receive both an alcoholic drink for said individual and a drink or drinks intended for the consumption of other individuals in an approved PUD.
Okay, so you can buy as many drinks as you want to, as long as you put a sticker on them and carry them around. And they're not, they're closed, you're just drinking one, right?
That's my understanding of the intent of what we did. But you can take them to, if you're with a group, I can walk over to my group of friends and say, there's five of us total. I can go up to the establishment, order five drinks. Sure, I could buy, yeah.
Okay. If you carry them around and you carry them, or you want to keep them with you because you are going to sit through a concert, and it's going to take an hour or something, where do, where can you buy those drinks? Anywhere in the whole place?
That'll be up to the establishments, I believe.
Be up to what?
To the establishments themselves as to how they go about complying with this. In theory, you could buy it from any restaurant who sold alcohol. But if that entity doesn't want to sell multiple drinks to one individual, they always have the right to say no.
Well, who's going to sell multiple drinks, Troy? What groups?
Anybody.
Anybody?
Any restaurant there, that's their option. Just if they leave the establishment with it, it's got to be in a cup or it's got to have a three-by-five fluorescent sticker with the restaurant's name on it so that law enforcement will know that beverage came from within the city center, not somebody brought it from home.
Okay. All right, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any discussion? Have a motion?
I'm going to motion to approve the update to the alcohol ordinance as presented.
Second.
Please vote. Carriage four to one. Number B, ATV ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our second time going through the PTV ordinance, which is designed to permit folks to operate what we broadly call personal transportation vehicles on certain roads within the city. We went over a lot of these limitations last time. We talked about it. They're all set forth in here, but essentially, the concept is you can't drive your golf cart or your other personal transportation vehicle on a state highway unless you're looking to cross that state highway, and there are certain DOT regulations that exist at that particular intersection. For anything else on city streets with a speed limit of twenty-four, twenty-five miles per hour or less, you're good to go in terms of using your personal transportation vehicle on those roads. In the event you come to a crossing where you need to cross over a street on which you cannot drive your vehicle, so let's say it's a thirty-five mile per hour road, then there would need to be signs there indicating to all directions of traffic, this is a place where golf carts or personal transportation vehicles may be crossing. So you can't advance your, your vehicle on those particular roads, but you can cross them.
We can cross state highways?
No, no, ma'am, you cannot. These are only those city streets or roads that are not state highways with, with a speed limit in excess of twenty-five miles per hour. So think, you're driving your golf cart on your twenty-five mile per hour road, and you come to an intersection where the crossing road is thirty-five miles per hour. The idea is you can drive across that thirty-five mile per hour road so long as there are sufficient signs and things of that nature giving notice of the...
We would have to put the signs up, too.
That's correct.
You'll have to have a sign on every street everywhere in the whole city of Cumming, correct?
No.
Yeah, you will, or you'll get sued, no telling what.
So why do you have to have one on Canton Highway when it's fifty-five?
Well, you don't have to have it on state roads, but on every other road in the city, you're going to have to have a signage, golf carts are permissible or they are not permissible. Let me ask you this. I talked to several people since we did this because I think this is a really dangerous thing to do, and I think the city will get sued quite a lot when people have accidents, and I do think that they'll have a lot of accidents. If you don't have an ordinance, you don't have a golf cart ordinance, you can't be sued because golf carts aren't legal anywhere except Peachtree City. If you have one, you can be sued within the limits of your ordinance. And that's what I've found from a couple of lawyers who do personal injury. Now, let's say you got a golf cart somewhere, and it's on its twenty-five miles an hour deal. It comes up to the thirty-five, and the people say, well, yeah, whatever, and they keep going. They have an accident. About the time they come back into the twenty-five area, everybody's going to sue everybody. Right?
I suppose that's a possibility. I mean, I don't know that personal injury attorneys are always looking to limit the number of people they sue in a particular instance.
No, I'm sure they sue each, they possibly can. But I'm just saying, doesn't that open the city up to tons of liability?
I don't think it opens the city up into anything more than already exists with people driving, operating bicycles on city streets. They're...
Bicycles are legal, golf carts are not.
By analogy, they're similar, though, right? Because we can't control whether a bicycle operator...
You can pass a bicycle a whole lot quicker than you can pass a go-kart.
Well, you're not allowed to pass a golf cart according to these ordinance, according to this ordinance. You have to treat it like a car on the road in an effort to make it safer.
And how's that going to do, you think that's going to work with our traffic? I mean, really, we've got a lot of traffic here, and I think you'll have people who'll say, hmm, you know, I'm going to pass this person, they're going twenty-five miles an hour, and they pass them and get hurt. I think you're just opening yourself up to all kinds of accidents within the city.
What? Go ahead, finish, sorry.
Go ahead.
My, my question is, and I haven't looked at the list, are outside of neighborhoods, are there many twenty-five mile an hour streets that are accessible from another twenty-five mile an hour street?
I would honestly have to look at a map. I can't, I can't answer that definitively as I stand.
I know, just driving around, I didn't notice many. Where I'm getting at is most of the, and I'm probably wrong, but most of the twenty-five mile an hour streets I've, I've noticed are neighborhoods where currently I see many golf carts used now.
I don't see any golf carts, except there's one in our neighborhood.
I see quite a few. That's just my wondering is, are we making it, would this create an environment to allow them to be used safer than they currently already are?
Are you kidding?
Well, they're, like I just said, they're already used, right? And they're not inspected. I, I, this is a question, I'm wondering, they're not inspected currently.
They're not used in our neighborhood. We have one person that gets on a golf cart occasionally, that's it.
I, I can count quite a few I've seen in my neighborhood and in, in other neighborhoods around.
Well, you still can't get to the city center from your neighborhood unless we get a special permission to cross Highway twenty, which would be disastrous to the traffic.
It could be, I, I don't, I can't, I can't say that. But that's just my, my, my wondering is, so there, for, my point exactly is, so you'd be driving your golf cart on Hickory Ridge, and as of now, you can't legally cross over, right?
I'm in a neighborhood where they used to the road dead end. Dead ended at my house. Now it goes all the way over to Triple Gap Road. People go through there going sixty miles an hour. It's twenty-five. They don't care, it's their way to connect to get to the road and go home. They fly. Golf carts? I mean, I just hate to think what will happen to them if they're out there, other than, like Lamar drives his late at night or late in the evening when the traffic's not to your house.
Playing devil's advocate, do people ride their bicycle across that intersection at all or walk across that intersection?
They don't drive through our neighborhood, no. But I mean, I, I wish the road didn't go all the way through, but it does. But I'm just saying, no, we don't have, we don't have bicycles in that neighborhood, but golf carts would be really dangerous.
If I'm, if I may, Councilwoman, let better, I just, if someone's driving sixty miles per hour in a twenty-five mile per hour zone, it's not going to make much of a difference, I don't think, in terms of if there's someone on a golf cart or a bicycle or walking or otherwise. That person driving sixty miles per hour in that zone is still operating their vehicle in violation of the law, so...
I'm just saying, let's say they're going forty, and it's a twenty-five, and the golf court's going twenty. They're probably going to hit it. I'm just saying it's opening up a lot of accidents that, that old people especially will say, oh, it's okay for me to drive my golf cart. I'm going to get out there in my golf cart and drive wherever I want to.
I don't have as big an issue with the safety aspects. I think for people that do drive the golf carts, the ordinance requires more out of them. And I think that's what you're getting at. The ordinance requires more out of the golf cart with lights, seat belts, different safety mechanisms.
My question, does this for safety make it more safe?
Well, you have to have insurance that's, right now, I doubt anybody that operates a golf cart.
Insurance, you got to register it, you got to understand. You get a list of the roads you get, there's a lot of things that...
You can put eight people on it, so there's no seat belts.
My bigger concern is one is that it's, in the areas where there are high traffic, it would be more of a traffic congestion problem. I was kind of hoping we could go through the list of approved streets and maybe even have somebody do a map and really maybe take out some of the ones that don't make a ton of sense. Even if you can't get to them, you know, like I noticed the squares would be available. You can't get to it on a golf cart.
No, the square's not available because it's state routes.
I saw somewhere, I thought it said...
You can go on Courthouse Square, but you can't get to it.
This is really high bait. It needs to be researched a lot more than it's been done with the, I'm like you, with the streets you've got. See where the patterns are where you could actually even drive your golf cart other than in a neighborhood.
So what, what street are you worried about the traffic?
Any street.
I'm saying which street?
Okay, as you come up to the high school, it's twenty-five.
That's a thirty-five mile an hour street.
It turns thirty-five, but it's twenty-five before you get there.
No, it's twenty-five during the school zone.
But it's thirty-five.
During school hours.
And then let's say...
So that street's, you can't even get on Triple Gap.
Okay, but let's say, are you sure everybody's going to know the difference? And they're going to say, oh, this is twenty-five and that's thirty-five.
They're going to have to sign a map, they're going to get a map from the PD when they register that says this is the street.
And you're going to have, you're going to have signage everywhere that says, golf cart permissible, no golf carts, everywhere.
No, he's saying you've got to have one if you're crossing a, and I don't even know where that place would even be where you're crossing a thirty-five.
I'm just saying, why are we doing this? What is the reason that we're doing this at all?
Can I address your first question really quickly about crossing streets and signage?
No, I want to know why we're doing this. Why, just so you can drive a golf cart in the neighborhood?
So right now, if you're driving a golf cart in your neighborhood, you can get hit with about five or six traffic violations. So if you're driving in a Deer Park, going to your friend's house down the street in a neighborhood, you could get five or six traffic violations.
Then why can't we just make this golf cart thing that you can drive in neighborhoods?
That's pretty much what it is. If you read the list of the streets, tell me, tell me a twenty-five mile an hour street you're worried about.
I'm worried about the whole thing. I'm worried about...
I'm saying, I think that you're, you're looking at, people are going to be driving it through town, and they can't.
If a person's on a street driving a golf cart, and it's not in their neighborhood, they're at risk to get hit.
Which, which street is that, though? That's what I'm asking, Linda.
I don't know, any street. What streets can they drive on?
Any twenty-five mile an hour street.
So they can't drive anywhere but in a Deer Park or your neighborhood or...
That's pretty much it.
That's it, the two networks.
There's some other streets that you can legally drive it on, but you can't get there from any residential area. Like say the street that's the Buford Dam Extension Road. Well, that's twenty-five, but you can't get to it legally because Castleberry at that point's forty-five, and Veterans Memorial's forty-five. So you can't even, that street's off limits.
And why would you put it in there?
The traffic engineer listed every street in the city that fell within the guidelines of twenty-five mile an hour.
I just think you're opening a can of worms where people won't know which street they can drive on, and they won't care. And if they're older, they'll just think, hmm, I can drive on it. I just think you're opening us up to a lot of liability.
I asked Kevin about this, and Jonah may come opinion on it. He seemed to think that by allowing it, by not ticketing people, kind of what Linda's talking about, versus passing the law, we would be in more liability than we would be pat than just passing the law.
Most states and counties in Georgia do not have a golf cart law.
Which ones do, Jonah?
They don't see a reason for one because they don't allow golf carts. Now Peachtree City's built for golf carts.
The following cities have a PTV ordinance of some sort. I'm not saying it's the exact same as ours or anything like that. Fitzgerald, Pooler, Conyers, Avondale Estates, Monroe, Alma, Peachtree City, Canton, Cartersville, Dalton, and Griffin. And if we continue going through Muni code, I bet we could at least double or triple that list pretty quickly. We stopped in an effort to kind of make a point. Well, to answer your other question, I tend to agree with, with Mr. Talent when it comes to having a regulatory scheme in place being something that might insulate the city further because it gives, it gives more of an enforcement mechanism. And someone who is out actively driving in violation of an ordinance, in addition to other state laws, is likely going to be someone who is individually liable more so than the city is. For example, if you go drive your, your golf cart right now and you get a citation or you get into an accident, you violated state law, but there was nothing in the city you could argue, I suppose, which says, well, had you gone to the PD and registered your vehicle and gotten the map and things of that nature, you could have found a way to comply and drive your golf cart in a safe place. So by laying this out and being as specific as we're trying to be, having safety measures on the golf carts, having a licensing scheme, having insurance and things like that, I think we're actually taking steps at least to reduce the city's liability. But it also always goes back to anybody can sue anybody for anything on any day.
Why would we have liability when golf carts aren't legal here? Why would we have any liability anyway?
Well, we can't turn a blind eye to things that are a problem, though, too. If we can find a way, if we can find a way to regulate it, then we can ensure that people engage in this activity and do so safely without incurring any kind of, with, with them minimizing their exposure to any potential criminal liability. Again, these are traffic tickets, we're not talking major criminals.
But I'm saying, I don't think we've had any golf cart problems except maybe inside a neighborhood where they fell off a sidewalk or something like that. But as far as just having cars and golf carts...
Well, I know, I know when we have events at the fairgrounds, I've seen numerous people that get their own golf carts. Currently. To say that they aren't used in, in the city is, that's, that's not accurate because they are outside of, outside of neighborhood streets. And to Linda's point, Jonah, would passing this ordinance create any new, would it open us up to any liabilities that aren't currently there because the ordinance is in place?
If the city is actively enforcing its ordinances to the best of its ability, then in theory, no, it's not opening us up to new liabilities. We can't say that for certain, though, because we just don't know what people are going to do and how a plan is...
I'm not questioning if people can sue us. I'm questioning, are we opening up anything to...
That certainly isn't the intent, obviously. We're trying to minimize liabilities and exposures, and we think that this ordinance is a way to do that because it says if you're going to operate your personal transportation vehicle on our streets, not our sidewalks, because you're not allowed to do that anymore. That's expressly against the rules according to this ordinance.
So if now golf carts are being operated on city streets, and we don't have an ordinance, and we aren't enforcing them, are we open to our liabilities now?
Well, I don't know that it's so much a city liability at that point still, though. It's still more of an issue of now we've prescribed a way people can, can safely operate their golf carts on a city street because they've got to have certain safety measures in place. And they have to have, they have to register it and things of that nature. And then if you're operating an unregistered vehicle post passage of this ordinance or a similar one down the road, you're in violation of the city ordinance, and that's kind of, you know, in tort world, that's a bad idea. Here, I don't think that the city is necessarily open to some kind of crazy liability or anything of that nature without the ordinance. But it's like you just said, when you're going to the fair or other events at the fairgrounds, now people are going to know, A, you can't operate your golf cart in this area, B, you can't do so on the sidewalk. And if they don't know it, then we have a police department that will be happy to remind them of those requirements.
Well, I've never seen anybody drive a golf cart to the fair.
I know, I know.
I see them at the fair, but not driving to it.
How do they get there?
You've seen them?
I've seen them, how do they get there? I know they're not being pulled from their house on a trailer behind their vehicle up to the fairgrounds just to drive around at the fairgrounds.
Well, if it's like Lewis and On, they, they pay for them, they're there, they stay there. You drive your car.
I'm just saying, I, I know there are people that get to the fairgrounds.
I've never seen a golf cart on a, on a road in and coming, other than...
Maybe it was a sidewalk, and maybe it wasn't the road, but that sidewalk's still not right.
Right now, you can put a triangle behind, on the back of your riding lawnmower and drive it all the way through town, totally legal.
You can, true.
And that's going two miles an hour versus twenty on a golf cart.
Are you hay baler? You can do that.
But it's totally legal.
Because a guy got off his hay baler and told me he could do that.
And drive it on Highway twenty, Highway nine, anywhere you want to go.
And why is that?
State law.
Because we're, we're farming community still.
So, but this would change that.
No, what I'm getting at is you can drive your lawnmower right now with an orange triangle on the back all around the square, everywhere you want to go. You could go to Walmart and back and...
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is if you don't have an ordinance, golf carts are illegal, period. If you do have an ordinance, that's questionable. Can you be on this street? Can you be on that street? That one's twenty-five? Yeah, I guess you can go there.
But it's up to the operator of that, of that vehicle to know what streets they're allowed on and which ones they're not. I mean, it's...
You're asking people to, to do a whole lot?
Well, it's a privilege, and I think it even says so in the ordinance itself, that this is something that is considered a privilege. It's not something, no, I'm sorry, that's another ordinance I was looking at earlier. But it's still something that you're registering with the city to say, I'm taking on this liability, I'm paying the registration fee, I'm getting the insurance or have the insurance already, I'm accepting the consequences of my actions if I operate my golf cart outside the scope of what's allowed by this ordinance.
Well, you all set your mind, there's no need to make, whatever. I'm there.
Any other discussion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I mean, is anybody else interested in taking some of the streets off that don't make sense? Just to be more clear about it?
It doesn't matter to me.
I mean, the near four hundred Parkway is on there, and I realize none of the connecting streets.
There's a lot of things on there that don't connect to the street.
Well, I know, so practically speaking, it wouldn't be used, but it's almost seems like if we had a map to look at, it would be more clear about.
Well, we had one last meeting.
We just had a list.
I think you need to set up a map, and only put the streets that you can actually get to. 'Cause Pilgrim Mill's on it, and you can't drive on Pilgrim Mill except through the little, little traffic thing there, where I got a ticket across from the city park, or used to be city park. You can drive to there, and then you stop, 'cause it's thirty-five. I mean, you can't get around it the rest of it, it's thirty-five miles an hour. So that's basically useless.
Postpone it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. To postpone it, so we can look further into.
Second?
Second.
Please vote.
What was the?
Just motions to postpone. Here's five of them. New Business Administration, the IGA with the Downtown Development Authority and City Center Management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, the purpose of this item is to transfer the ownership of the Coming City Center to the Downtown Development Authority. The city center can be more efficiently managed through an authority pursuant to the powers it has under state law, uh, including leasing authority, future, and future development. Duties of the DDA, uh, include the following. Supervise and direct and execute the lease, the leasing of property, manage personnel that operates the city center, perform maintenance duties as needed, negotiate and execute contracts for goods and services. Uh, and here's the important one. Collect and remit funds, including rents, to the City of Coming in exchange for the transfer of property. And, uh, you know, and also it provides a layer of protection for the city. You know, an example that we've talked about before is if someone falls in one of the stores or the restaurants at the city center, they would be suing the DDA, they wouldn't be suing the City of Coming.
But if money's paid, the City of Coming would pay it, correct?
That's that'd be up to the judge, I guess. But anyway, that, we've been talking about this, um, for quite some time. We knew when we, uh, entered the project of constructing the city center that at some point in time we would be transferring it to the DDA for the purposes of, you know, you can write contracts longer than one year. And there's, there's other, uh, other duties that the DDA can do that, that is a lot more cumbersome for the city to do. So tonight, what you have in front of you is an IGA, uh, to, uh, transfer ownership of the city center to the Downtown Development Authority. And I'll try to answer any questions you have.
I have questions.
Okay.
Okay, the only thing that a DDA can do that we can't do is make a lease for longer than a year.
Uh, well, they've got other things that they can do, um.
Like what?
Well, they do provide that layer of protection that I talked about, between the city.
But if you're sued, you're sued, I mean, it's the city.
It's like a bi- it's like a business.
Take a little bit longer, but you're gonna be sued.
Why, why a business has multiple entities?
Yeah.
Because it insulates the, you know, the owner.
Okay, I got another question. The people that are on the DDA, have they ever changed? Because when Troy brought up the, the list that we voted for, I didn't know most of these people, and some of them don't live in the city. Has that changed since then?
The group that was initially appointed to the DDA has pretty much stayed the same. We've had, um, one person that resigned his position, and we've had to fill that position a couple of times. I think with the exception of one person, they're all the original appointments to the DDA.
Then they don't, do they all live in the city?
Either live in the city or own businesses.
Well, I don't care if they own a business, do they live in the city?
That's the rules, that's the rules of the, uh, DDA.
Either live in the city or own a business in the city.
Well, this says right here, if the city doesn't make the payments, doesn't put sufficient money in there for the DDA to make the payments, that it simply comes back to the city, and we have to level an ad verum tax on all property located with the city subject to such tax and amounts necessary to make the contract payments. So basically, we're giving them all this authority, taking it away from us, and still it boils down to, we gotta pay the money. We, the city council and the City of Coming.
Well, we have to guarantee that the money's paid. If the DDA don't pay it out of their funds, then the city's the guarantor on that.
This is just a way to remove.
The, the DDA is really acting more like a landlord in this situation. They're, or almost a pro- almost a property management company in a way, where they're going to be acting as, as the person who is directly involved with collecting monies from a tenant and bringing that money back over for the city to make payments.
I understand it, I read, we had it at the, when I was in the, the ca- commission in the county. I understand it perfectly, but the only reason we had it then was because they could borrow money that we couldn't borrow. In this case, the city can borrow any amount of money that the DDA can borrow, in any way that they want to borrow it, which is a note or a bond. And we never, that, that our downtown, our authority do bonds. But anyway, I just don't understand why we're taking all of our influence into this, away from the city council, and giving it to a group of people that I don't really know.
You know me?
Well, one ra- one thing that we do have to consider, though, is that the issue of the DDA can enter into contracts longer than one year. Because if you look at the tenants, the tenants that we have lined up for the city center, none of them are gonna come sign a lease for one year. They're making, they're making way too big of an investment in their build out and their infrastructure. They're gonna, they're gonna require, uh, multi-year leases. So that's one thing that the city's restricted to, and that's one of the, that's one of the main reasons, you know, that we have to consider putting this into the.
They can do that, and we don't have to give them deeds to the property. They can be a management company, and we don't have to give them the deed to the property, correct?
Well, I'll defer to our legal counsel on that one.
Legal counsel. They can be a management company, and we don't have to give them the deed to the property.
We would have to be on the deed, or we'd have to be on the lease, and we couldn't bind ourselves.
Right, we'd have to have something in the lease that assigns certain tasks and authority to the DDA, and this is frankly just a cleaner and simpler way to do it.
Well, we do. I mean, you, you're assigning certain things back to the city. The city's got to make the payments. The city's got to every month give the money to the DDA to pay the payments.
Now, they're gonna have rent coming in every month.
Right.
Would it help if, if you were to explain that, under Georgia state law, cities can, you give a job, if you promise to repay, if it's a agreement between government and the citizens? In this case, the DDA, uh, which is the city.
That's a fair point, the process.
This is Steve England, the United Community Bank, we've talked before, he's the chief.
And he's in a good spot against review questions for the council, if that's all right, because he's been helping us tremendously.
Certainly, glad to hear it.
If I can be of any assistance. I think the reason, uh, under Georgia state law, the city has, uh, an easier time, a less procedural time in issuing an obligation when it's between two units of government. And the purpose, when you're using a development authority, where it's the city's own development authority, meaning it seats the board of directors, it controls what happens at the DDA, so I get your concern about giving ownership of a building.
Is it not just so that you can get the money quicker?
I'm sorry?
Is the reason you can get the money much quicker than you could if you were loaning it to the city?
No, I don't, I don't know that it's speedier, I think it is more expeditious. I think it's less procedurally laden if you use two units of local government, simply because the state legislature wants to, uh, encourage cooperation between polit- political subdivisions, local forms of government. And it's really using that device. And then you look statutorily at what can that financing be used for? It's the acquisition of real property, which is why the DDA acquires, but agrees that it transfers the property back to the city for the payment of one dollar when the underlying debt is satisfied.
Oh, I know that.
So the DDA's.
I know, they really don't own the property. I'm just saying, why mess with them? The city is still, the city is still a legal entity of government, too.
If you weren't financing this, I'd be sitting on your side of this argument. The fact that you are financing this, though, changes the whole paradigm.
So we can say as the city council, we hadn't borrowed any money, the DDA borrowed the money.
I, I wouldn't say that, no. I mean, I, I don't think that would be.
I'm sure that'd be said.
I, I don't think that would be a truthful statement, but I suppose you could say it, but I, I wouldn't, I would, anybody.
Okay, thank you.
You're so welcome, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You know, the main reason we need the DDA, to me, is the, we can't bind ourselves for more than a year. Tenants, especially tenants doing build out, are gonna be extremely anxious about not being able to.
Still, they'll have to give them.
Hold on, let me finish. Are str- are gonna have a hard time binding, not having any sort of, you know, longer-term lease when they're spending that type of money. And then secondly, I like the idea of a group specifically considering the leases and who goes there, and kind of working with those groups or helping with, you know, programming the city center and coming up with different ideas and stuff. It's, it's kind of like a subset, and if you don't like what's going on there, you simply, you can disband it. All of a sudden, poof, we can get rid of them.
How would you even know what's going on?
Well, we do have, um, you are aware that we do have a council member, myself, on the DDA, right? And, and just, just like on the, uh, just like on the development authority when we created the DDA, you sit on the development authority, which if.
I sat through one of your meetings, yeah.
No, you're on the development authority.
I'm not on this one.
No, but you're on the development authority, which was also created. Which was created at the same time with all the same members, save myself, which is for you. I'm just saying, there is a council member on the DDA.
So it's your, you're the one that's gonna come and tell us what's going on, right?
I suspect we're all gonna be pretty aware of things going on in the city center.
How are we gonna be aware of that?
What do you mean? You're not ever gonna go over there?
Of sure, of course.
I'll be there.
The council still, to my understanding, still has control over the DDA, of course. We, we have the right to remove members, put new members on in their place. You know, there, there's, we're not ceding authority to the DDA completely.
Overwhelmingly, we have to give tenants assurances that they'll have a long-term lease. It can't be on the whim of a council that just say, oh, signed up, can't renew you after a year, or just, they won't do that. The amount of money they're spending is.
The DDA will also be working in conjunction with the administrative branch of the city, uh, with me, Jeff, Jennifer, Allison in accounting, I mean, we'll all be working with them, too. So we'll have oversight over, you know, the, the monies that are coming in, if we, you know, we're, we're gonna have oversight over what's going on in a lot of respects.
But I'm just saying, to, in order to do the contracts, I totally agree. But you don't have to give them the deeds to do the contracts.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Which one is this?
Number one, IGA.
I'll make a motion to approve the IGA with the DDA as presented.
Second. Please vote. Here's four to one. Number two, city center deed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this item is to approve the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of the deed to transfer the city center property to the DDA.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the deed. Second.
Please vote. Here's four to one. Number three, resolution to IGA with DDA for construction and financing of the city center.
Okay, the purpose of this item is to allow the DDA to finance the completion of the city center project. Uh, in this case, the DDA would issue a promissory note in the amount of ten million dollars. Uh, these funds will be used to cover the costs associated with completion of the city center project. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them while.
Now, this note is with the bank, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And it's, it's just so that you can draw on money quickly to finish the project up.
Hang on, hang on, do it right now. Okay. Okay, so we don't need to do, which one do we need to do? So we don't, we don't need the, we don't need to do this? Okay, okay. So we just need to approve the resolution to do this if, if you approve doing that. You wanna, you wanna handle this for me?
Yeah.
You, you go.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sorry, we're getting it all in order here. So what we really need to do in terms of, of action items tonight is discuss, is discuss the resolution which covers both, well, it covers all the resolution, the deed, and the IGA with the DDA for construction and financing. And what we're trying to do here is make sure, um, we're making sure the mayor has the ability to sign the, um, IGA with the DDA regarding financing and completion. And that's the only vote we'll need, um.
Say that again.
They're all different resolutions, though.
I understand, but it looks like we have in here the actual agreements, not resolutions. So the resolution is designed to be.
Yeah, they have resolutions, too.
The resolution gives them the power to borrow this money, correct?
That is supposed to be correct. Okay.
And then the next resolution gives them the power to issue a bond or a note, whatever you wanna call it.
I see what you're saying on the construction and financing.
If what's agreeable to us? The mayor can sign documents to quickly pay off the bills as they come, right? I said the mayor can sign, sign off to pay off the bills as they come due, right? Against this line of credit, like you would on a house.
There's, there's an intergovernmental agreement that was an attachment to, I think, your package. I think it was the first document that you considered. And in the, in that agreement, the city agrees to cash flow the DDA's high rate of payments of interest or debt service in this temporary financing, because there aren't, there isn't lease revenue at this moment until the project is accepted and can be occupied.
But the things that are being paid would be signed by the mayor, not the DDA.
Uh, I'm sorry, council, do you know?
The resolution will be signed by the mayor, and the resolution gives the mayor the authority to sign certain IGAs, or it gives the mayor the authority to sign the IGAs with the DDA, and it gives the mayor the authority to sign the deed to the DDA.
We're back to the deed.
Counsel, I believe she's asking, when bills come due. Counsel, I believe she's asking, when bills come due at the city center, they're gonna be paid for with monies from the line of credit.
Correct.
Who's signing, who's signing off on it?
The DDA.
Is that correct, Lynn? That's where you were trying to...
Who signs off on it, the DDA or the mayor?
Not the mayor.
Then I'm not thinking of the DDA signing off.
Let me say that again, not the mayor.
If you're talking about accounts payable, like, say we have a roofing contractor that finishes up the roof, and they submit the payout to me, and then I make sure it's approved by the construction manager, and then I'm the one that certifies.
But to you, it's not the DDA.
No, it goes to me. Yeah.
Well, the DDA hires the city as its engine to complete the construction, so it's the city. I know.
Let's all go to circle.
The DDA is an alter ego. Think of it as a corporation with very little in terms of staffing or operations, and it's really the city that controls this project, how it's like, what the policy is, how it's secured, it is, how it's constructed. That control lies with the city, not with the DDA.
Right, thank you.
The DDA is very little, you're empowering the DDA to do very little. And, you know, frankly, you can read their minutes after everyone, their meetings, and watch financial statements, and you'll be fully aware of their contracts.
Well, they get to do all the contracts, so that's kind of a big part.
They actually hire the city as their engine to finish the project. If they don't, you can do the contracts.
Well, the contracts, like if you're talking about the contract with a tenant, someone leasing, we do, we do the negotiation on that and get the final numbers.
Going forward, doubts to be the case.
What's that now? Going forward, say, five years from now, a tenant, one tenant moves out, new tenant comes in. Who will be negotiating the contract from that?
The project, or the property manager, hopefully, it's still Jennifer Archer, and she'll be consulting, she'll, I'm support to her, my office is. We work together on all of that.
It's not the DDA is negotiating.
No, we would, we would take it to the DDA for final approval. Just like when we're doing something, a project here, I'll bring it to y'all for your final approval. A lot of the groundwork's done at staff level.
Any other questions?
John, is it all in order, or what?
I think it is. I'm trying to make sure that I have the... The way we're supposed to be going is the IGA between the DDA and the city for the city center management.
We approved that.
We've approved that. Then with regard to items two through four, under new business, item A, we're supposed to be approved by way of giving, of approving the resolution for the mayor to engage and execute those documents. We approved the deed, and I don't think that is an issue at all, particularly if we approve the resolution as it exists. In other words, if you approve the resolution, which again covers the deed, the resolution itself, and the IGA for construction and financing, then everything is back in order, in terms of what we need to do here tonight.
You got it figured out, John?
The revision, so, yes. The resolution authorizes the city to enter into the IGA with the DDA for financing and completion, and it gives the mayor the power to sign it, but you only need to vote on the resolution.
All right, I got another question. What percent are we borrowing this at?
It's a 2.71. I saw that in the document today.
That's a fixed rate?
It's a fixed rate, yes.
On no prepayment penalty.
Our agenda says two resolutions. Would you seem to keep referencing just one resolution?
One is the bond. One is the paying the bill.
I'll tell you the reason, when Kevin, yeah, I know. When Kevin was going out of town, I asked him for the items for the agenda. He sent them to me as four separate items, so I listed them on the agenda as he sent them to me in the email. Whereas, we found out now that the resolution covers three of those items. So I'll beg forgiveness on that.
So what do we need now?
So a resolution of the city council of the city of coming, Georgia, authorizing the execution and delivery and performance of an intergovernmental contract with Downtown Development Authority of the city of coming pertaining to the issuance of a promissory note. That's the resolution.
That's correct. And if we flip the page, now we have therefore resolved. That's where we talk about the authorization of contract, the authorization of assignment, and the authorization of the limited warranty deed that we discussed previously already.
So that's the line of credit. It's not the bond?
Correct. There's no bond.
What's the note?
Alone. A line of credit, excuse me.
So we're not, we don't have a note going out for another ten million dollars? We're only talking about one ten million dollars, not two? So the bond's gonna pay the note?
The bond's gonna pay this note, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. And bonds take three months, I know, so... Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
So in terms of what we need to do, I think we need to have someone move to, to take back what we did with regard to the deed, and then approve this resolution, which then encompasses the deed and the contract and the resolution itself. I think that's where we need to get, go in order to get this procedurally correct.
I think we need to remove the motion on the deed?
I think so, because it's covered within this resolution. I guess it's really six in one, half dozen in the other, because we're, you're kind of approving the deed through the resolution anyway.
Right. I think, yeah, it's up to you.
I think as long as we approve the resolution, I think it's fine as it sits. But if we're gonna have an issue with the resolution, we need to pull the authority on the deed as well.
Just make a motion to do away with the previous vote on the deed, and then start over.
All right, I'll make a motion to withdraw the, the motion to approve the city center deed on its own.
Second. Please vote.
I didn't vote for it, so I shouldn't vote for it.
Yes, I don't know. I was thinking about that.
Motion carries four one.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the resolution.
Anything else?
We have a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance of the IGA with the Downtown Development Authority pertaining to the issuance of a promissory note.
Promissory note or line of credit?
Title of the promissory note, but I understand that's just the mechanism for the line of credit.
So we have a motion? Joey, second, please vote. Carries four to one. So we got it all done. You're good with it? All right. Item B, utilities, RFP results for distribution and collection shop, south parking lot renovation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, have six bids or proposals, and the low bid came from Jasper Grading and Pipeline for this project, so we're recommending to accept this low proposal of $212,000 for this project.
Wait, John, are you doing the south parking lot renovation?
Yeah, that's what's, it's just not in that order in the packet. It's this one.
Doing what?
South parking lot. It's a painting project at the south side of the distribution shop.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, on the agenda, that's the first one.
Okay, what parking lot are you talking about?
It says the distribution center up there. You know, we're renovating that building.
Oh, yeah.
We paid the north parking lot.
So now you gotta pay the other park. Got you, okay.
We got enough, you know, construction.
That's in Good Lightman Sterns, I understand.
So we had six bids ranging from 212,000 up to 346,297 and 95 cents, and the low bid is from Jasper Grading and Pipeline, and so we recommend accepting that low bid, $212,000.
Any questions or discussion?
Is this a budget? I mean, it is a SPOS, it's a SPOS project, isn't it?
Oh, no, it's just a utilities project.
I have a motion?
Motion to approve, who was it? Oh, I think I might have mixed them. That was... Yeah, I know it's Jasper. I was just trying to get the amount. Jasper Grading Pipeline, an amount of $212,000.
We could leave you with hack parking lot.
Second, by Joey, please vote. Carries five oh.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And then next is RFP results for distribution and collection insulation project.
This is a bunch of cans of great stuff we're gonna spray in the building. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bids. The low bid came from Edge Roofing in the amount of 292,400 dollars. The high bid was B.E. Guthrie for 494,678, and we are recommending going with Edge Roofing in the amount of 292,400 dollars.
Any questions or discussion?
Now, what is this?
This is the one for the distribution and collection insulation project, but it's the first one in our packet. It was, they're, they're mixed up.
Okay.
That's correct. It's this one?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to go with Edge Roofing, amount of 292,400 dollars.
Second, please vote.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Carries five oh. Thank you, John. Announcements, there are none. Executive session. No motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Please vote. Carries five oh. Thanks, everyone.
Motion to close executive session.
So moved.
Please vote. Carries five oh. No motion.
I will make a motion that we purchase...
Sell.
Sell. My apologies. 1.22 acre portion of parcel C35001 off of near 400 Parkway in the amount of $40,000 as it was appraised. Second?
Second.
Second, by Joey, please vote. Carries four to one. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Please vote. Carries five oh.